Good evening. Thank you for attending the September 20, sorry, September 8th, 2025 regular meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. Printed agendas are available for our guests in the back of the room on that table, or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website, which is www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link, select Board of Education, and follow Board Docs link to our current meeting agenda. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll? Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mr. Hackelman?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine? Oh, is absent, sorry. Mrs. Lee Ban?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Next up is District Highlights, and we don't have any this evening. So we'll move along to 4.01, under Reports, Food Service Report. And welcome, Mr. Kessler.
I'd like to thank the Board for allowing me to make this presentation on food service. Last year, we served a total of 1,788,844 meals. We did it out of 23 buildings. We have 106 employees all trained in food safety. Forty-one have advanced training in food safety. And I brought the coordinators tonight, Daniel Parton and Elaine Adams. Breakfast, we charge $1.50 per grade level. Lunch is $2.75. Middle school is $3. I forgot to put the food cost per meal on, but at the elementary school, it's $1.27 per meal. Lunch is $1.78. Middle and high school is $1.40, and it's $1.99 for lunch. All meals are served in compliance with the United States Department of Agriculture, referred to as the USDA. The National School Lunch Breakfast Program Meal Pattern Requirements, along with Board of Education policy. Most people don't realize that our department is self-sustaining, meaning we cover our own expenses with federal reimbursements and program sales without additional support from the General Fund. School meals are important because hunger affects students' ability to concentrate. Addressing hunger through school meal programs is vital to ensure students can focus on their education and reach their full potential. The Food Services Resource page, you have access to the menus linked to free and reduced online application, link to PaySchool Central, the new online payment system. And the orange icon you see is the Link Connect Mobile App icon that can be found in the App Store. And you can see the online menu with it and filter the allergens out. You can see student transaction history and check students' balance. We also do lunch count and balance notifications weekly for negative balances. The components for lunch are fruit, vegetable subgroup, grains, meat alternate, and milk. The vegetable subgroups are dark green, red, orange, beans, peas, and lentils, starchy, other vegetables, and additional vegetables from any subgroup. We do offer alternate meals such as gluten-free, egg-free, dairy-free, and soy-free. Under Offer versus Serve at Lunch, we must offer all five components to students. Must choose at least three, with one component being a fruit or a vegetable. Offer versus serve is required for lunches in high schools, but optional in middle and elementary schools, and it's not required for field trips. If you look at the picture in the center, the student with their arms raised screaming, it's finding out that they can have pizza more than one day a week. But we do, however, suggest a variety. The components for breakfast are fruit, grains, and milk. Under Offer versus Serve at Breakfast, we must offer four food items from the three required food components. Students select at least three of the four offered food items, with one being at least half a cup of fruit. Beginning July 1 of 2025, there were limits to added sugars in school breakfast. Breakfast cereals may have no more than six grams of added sugars per dry ounce. Yogurt may have no more than two grams of added sugars per ounce. And flavored milk may have no more than 10 grams of added sugar per eight fluid ounces. Because of the shortened time and not wanting students to be late to class, breakfast is grab-and-go. Here are some examples of the type of breakfast that students can choose from. A la carte items are all non-meal items sold. An example would be a hamburger, bag of chips, or bottled water. In the a la carte item sold, the nutritional label has to be run through the Alliance for a Healthier Generation Product Calculator. This tells us if it is compliant or not. The food must meet the nutrient standards for calories, sodium, fats, total sugars. There are beverage standards for each grade level also. All grade levels can serve plain water, fruit or vegetable juice, 100% fruit or vegetable juice diluted, milk. In high school, only low-calorie, no-calorie beverages, with or without caffeine and/or carbonation, calorie-free flavored water. So Gatorade and sparkling ice would be examples of that. Our department takes pride in not only compliance with the bio-American requirements from the USDA, but also Ohio Proud in highlighting items produced or grown here in the state. We purchase products produced by Marzetti, which is based in Westerville. And bio-american only refers to food items. There are exemptions for items not grown in the United States or not enough grown in quantities. Bananas, pineapples, mandarin oranges, and kiwi are examples. We did the Farm to School Summer Challenge. When we offered fresh peaches, some kids hadn't seen a peach before. At first, they thought they were moldy because they had peach fuzz. But our staff along with the teachers convinced them that they were fine to eat, and everybody ended up enjoying them. While we did participate in the Farm to School Challenge, we won the Silver Beat Award. This is because we did the cucumber crunch, and we served peaches from Bowman Orchard. We're currently working with Jeff Bracken at Westerville North High School, and their garden supplied produce to the cafeteria at North. We're looking at hydroponic lettuce and bell peppers. In October, we participated in the apple crunch. It highlighted local apples. We served apples from Bowman Orchard to students at all grade levels. Years ago, when we started looking into Farm to School, we saw Bowman Orchard at the Westerville Farmer's Market. So we started buying apples, peaches, and plums from them. This past year, we had our administrative review where they go over every aspect of the program. They'll review applications, menus, a la carte binders. They'll come in and watch the menu service to make sure we're claiming meals correctly. We also, in addition to this, had a procurement review, and they make sure that we follow the federal procurement process. We also had our Resource Management Review, where it looks at paid lunch equity, revenue of non-program foods, indirect costs. All of these were closed with no violations. The administrative review, we received a commendation on the organization of our paperwork and the variety of our menu items. Over the summer, we upgraded some kitchens. All the equipment purchased was using funds from the food service account, not funds from the General Fund. At Handby, we went from serving on countertops to serving out of hot and cold wells. At Hawthorne, we added a steamer, upgraded the exhaust hoods, and installed prep tables. At Whittier, we added two combi ovens, upgraded the exhaust hood, new prep tables, and installed a walk-in cooler similar to the one at Hawthorne. We're also adding hot and cold service wells that will be installed when Handby's get installed. I would like to thank Charlie Boss for supplying pictures for the presentation. School meals are important because hungry students' ability to concentrate, their ability to concentrate. Addressing hunger through school meal programs is vital to ensure students can focus on their education and reach their full potential. We will continue to replace the equipment, upgrade serving areas to be more efficient in serving meals to our students. Our staff will continue to serve students nutrition meals in a friendly environment. And we will continue to look at new items and do taste tests to find out the most popular items while analyzing the menus to see what we need to be replaced. Any questions?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I really found it very helpful. Obviously, know that eating habits have a direct correlation with students' academic performances as well. One of my questions just kind of pertains to the procurement review. Obviously, it's to ensure that we are being compliant, but could you kind of speak to the equity piece in terms of we're doing that to also make sure that we're giving different vendors an opportunity to contract with the district, correct?
That's correct. They went through all of our financials when it came to the purchasing piece, and they came up with seven of our vendors, whether it be a micro purchase, a small purchase, a contract. And then they went through and they analyzed all of the transactions that we had with them. We made some corrections based upon their suggestions, and so we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Thank you so much. I just had a question about revising menus. And with our changing demographics in the district and different ethnicities sort of being more prolific inside of our district, how does that process work in terms of, you said taste testing, but like, could you outline that process a little bit about when you decide to rotate an item into the menu?
Well, usually what we'll do is we'll start, I'll start looking in like, in the springtime, going over the sales, and you'll find the items that aren't that popular. And then through food shows or sales reps that come in, we'll look at new products. And then, now that we have the two coordinators onboard, and both of them are looking at the taste testing piece, to go back to that. We have done that stuff in the past where we had raisins that we would, at the high school, we would take samples up and down the line while kids were waiting in there. And then I think we have brought in like pot stickers and, what was it, chocolate sun butter for the elementary kids to taste, so.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you so much, and thank you also for being here. I want to, I mean, that's amazing. Almost 1.8 million meals, so it's, kudos, thank you. You know, the food really is a lifeline for so many of our kids. I remember during COVID how, you know, we had to get meals to kids because that's, we're keeping kids alive by feeding them every day. So thank you for doing that. And my question is just about the food preparation and the movement of meals throughout the day. Can you just give us a brief overview of, you know, where meals are prepared and how they're getting distributed across the district? Because I think a lot of people don't know.
Yeah, at the elementary level, we do what's called satelliteing out. It comes out of South High School or Central High School. Those buildings, in addition to having a food service license from the Health Department, they have one from the Department of Agriculture. So they also get that inspection too. But the food gets cooked at the central kitchen, loaded into hot carts or cold carts, and then it gets shipped out to the buildings. One of the things that I'm trying to do, and we did it with Wilder, or yeah, with Wilder, was add the cooking piece to them. We added another piece of equipment to Hawthorne, because they already had a convection oven, so now they have a steamer to steam vegetables.
Great, thank you. It's an amazingly complicated process that you all manage every single day, so thank you.
Thank you.
And your additions that you're adding, which I think you mentioned earlier, comes from our food service money that you're able to invest back into that equipment. But I know you'd mentioned that the reason you're trying to add some of that equipment at the elementary, so they're able to keep the food warmer or fresher, do some of it on site. So it's still satellite in, but then being able to do some of that, and if you want to elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, we're gonna, well, we're gonna elaborate, well, we're gonna, it's gonna be shipped in frozen. We did add freezer units, bigger freezer units to Wilder and Hawthorne, so they'll be able to cook more as needed. One of the disadvantages is the satelliteing in. Some products out there don't hold up well in a hot cart. So if they're gonna be in there for five hours or whatever, they're still gonna be food safe, but it might not be as quality. So the last child in line isn't gonna get something that's same as the first child. So we're kind of, as we can move away from that, so that they can have the fresher food, that's one of the goals. And when I came back, Carrie knew that was one of the priorities that I did have.
Brent, that would be Wilder, right?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I know we have a lot of, a lot of elementaries in same letters, so, thanks.
I just want to say thank you to the whole team. You know, I, over the summer, I was in Westerville-Southford Band Camp, and I saw the massive undertaking in just one school that happens with checking every expiration date, stocking everything. It's a lot of work, and I just really appreciate all the work that you guys put into it. My question is something that I've heard a lot about, and I know we've answered this, but I think it would be useful to just answer it again. It's really around payment, and I know that we use a new system this year, but there's other ways that parents can send in money so that it can be loaded to their students' accounts. Could you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, I think on the food service webpage, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's, is it under PaySchools or is it under Negative Balance, something like that? It actually has a list of like what you can do, like sending a check, that you can also use PaySchools, but it kind of explains that part too. And I kind of overlooked that one.
Yeah, I know, I've sent in, just for people that are watching at home, I've sent in cash to my son, and he's like, okay, I'll just get it loaded. And they've been really helpful, and I know that's probably a little bit of extra work for them, but just really appreciate the many opportunities that we provide families to be able to loan money to their students' accounts through pay scale, the check, and cash. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks so much, really appreciate it. That is a lot of food. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have 4.02, and this is the Westerville City School Coach Advisory Guidebook. Welcome, Ms. Yanni.
Hi, thank you very much for having me here tonight. Ready to present about our Coach Advisor Guidebook and just kind of show a little bit about what we provide to our coaches. This is available for all of our staff members through our bookmarks. Tim Sifler was able to do that, but this is what we make sure that all of our coaches have. Which way do I point at Brent? Did you do that? Okay. So the first place, if somebody is interested in coaching on a team, the positions are posted in Front Line. Those are available for anybody to apply to. And when somebody interviews and they go through that interview process with our athletic directors as well as our principals, then one of the things that they will receive if they feel like they're a valuable candidate is a guide, the guidebook code, as well as the coach's tool chest, is something that we provide for all of our coaches and advisors, and they'll get their code for that. It is a yearly professional development that has all of the different pieces that will help that coach or advisor receive some of the certifications that they need. So we made sure that both of those were on that same sheet so that they have this available right to them from the get-go, so they could learn what is expected of them. Which one? Turning it on is always phenomenal. This way. Got it. Or maybe not. Brent? Did you turn it on? Yeah? The green light?
I think the battery died. I don't see a green light.
No, maybe.
I think the battery died.
Oh, oh.
Did she do that?
We're here to learn about the guidebook. Test it? Nice. I appreciate you all. Thank you tech support. Some of the different pages we will walk through today, but this is a guidebook for all of our coaches across all of our eight schools. And our athletic directors from those eight schools where our kids participate did all have input in all of these different pieces that we'll go through. It's all there on the side, but we're gonna highlight a handful of those for you. The first one is those resources and expectations about what is expected for our coaches. Every coach needs to have a pupil activity permit, as well as making sure that they do the yearly training. And so those things are highlighted there, and those are all pop-outs that will come, that are part of our site. We want to make sure that they understand that not only they're representing, you know, us, their school, but they're also representing the Ohio Capitol Conference, as well as the Ohio High School Athletic Association. There are many rules that we need to follow and make sure that we are in line with. One of the things we like to point out for our coaches is the fact that we are a multi-high school district, and there's lots of rules that go with that, including when can, who's gonna go where, and when can you talk to an eighth-grade student? So all of those things are laid out. You can see that huge flow chart there. That's all part of that process. We want to make sure that they understand supervision, security, and safety. So what is expected of them before, during, and after a practice? Kids are our responsibility, and we want to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe. So we need to make sure that we're very clear about what the expectation is. Another thing that's highlighted is all of the communication that goes into being a coach. First, you've got the communication between yourself and the athletic department. Then you've also got all of the logistics that go together with having a team, whether it's transportation, what your general needs are for your team, working with our athletic trainers through Ohio Health, as well as all of the families in final forms, because all of those things need to be filled out. You have to have some kind of team communication. Right now, our teams are using final forms, they're using Remind. You can use an app with the adults only, but you should and not be using an app with students. And so just making sure that all of those things are clear. Family rosters need to be going to the athletic secretaries or secretaries at the buildings. You have to have team expectations, and we use our positive behavior intervention and supports to make sure that we're building some of those team expectations and have examples of those. We want people to share with everyone, what, how do you letter when you're in varsity? What does that mean? Sometimes coaches also have to update their scores, and then all the way up to, how do I get this kid to make sure that they have college signings? So all of those different pieces of communication could all be part of what our coaches are doing. We have a lot of district processes that we want to make sure are clear, and we're trying to build more and more consistency. If you can imagine, with three different high schools all running, there's a lot of different coaches that are trying to maybe do it their own way, but we still want to make sure that we're doing it the Westerville way. Some of those examples are from our Treasuries Department, as well as like our PE waivers. Our Treasury Department, if you don't have a purchase order, you're not going to get what it is that you want. And so that is part of what we share with our coaches, as well as if families are interested in using a PE waiver when they're in a high school sport, this is the way that they do that. And so, and this was a change. And this was a change for the coaches, as well as for our families. So we made sure that this was very clear. And we shared this with our families, as well as we shared it with our coaches, so that if a kid came up to them, how is it that I get a PE waiver? It was clear for everyone. And that's through Power School now. We want to make sure that they understand that there are handbooks that students have to follow. It's not just the rules of their team, but it's our school rules, our school expectations, as well as our Code of Conduct for extracurricular expectations. So it's, you are representing more when you're wearing a uniform, and so we want to make sure that that is very clear. They have to understand all of those specific policies. For an end of the season, we want to make sure that our coaches know that we do survey our students, we survey our families, as well as they will go through an end-of-year evaluation. They can see all of those different questions that are asked of them and all of those expectations prior to those end-of-year items happening. Those are conversations that athletic directors have, as well as administrators have, with their coaches. Some of the feedback that we've received from those surveys are what highlight in our Chalk Talk newsletters. So yes, we've got this website that is available for them at all times, but then bi-weekly, we put out a Chalk Talk newsletter that highlights character, it highlights building community, so culture on your team, being positive, finding our Westerville way, as well as that communication piece. All of those are different things that we've gotten feedback from our families, as well as our students, that we need to improve in. Not on every team, but enough that it needs to be highlighted. Finally, we have our We Are the Ville Award. It is our sportsmanship award that we want to make sure our coaches are thinking about sportsmanship throughout our seasons. And they have a nomination form that will go to them each season, and there is a student from a middle school and a student from a high school that is highlighted here at one of our board meetings, and so that is highlighted as well. And finally, before we go, we've got some upcoming news that we are gonna be working with Coach Beyond through the Ohio State University, our mental health team, as well as some of our coaches and athletic directors and students from each one of our high schools. We're going to be meeting with Coach Beyond, and our We Are the Ville activities that we have done before are going to be happening in November, and we're really excited about that partnership that we've got with Coach Beyond as well. Any questions?
Could you just explain a little bit what Coach Beyond is?
Yeah. So they are a group that's formed mostly from social workers and mental health specialists about how, the way that we work with our students and the culture that we build on our team, we want to make sure that they're making great lifelong choices. And it is phenomenal work. They've done a lot of mental health work with Ohio High School Athletic Association, and they've done some work with some of our coaches already in the district, and we're just gonna expand it further. We've got two classes that they're gonna be running at our Westerville Educator Day, and then we're gonna be working with our students, as well as the coaches, in this November event.
And so is We Are the Ville event being moved to in November instead of the summer? Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah, so we'll be focusing with our athletes up until then at our high schools independently, and then they'll all come together. We're gonna have that hopefully here and make that event happen.
Thank you. I just have one last question. I think you talked a lot about the high schools, but I, this also applies to the middle schools as well.
Yes.
And I know it showed it at the beginning, but I think it's just important to know that the coaches also have this for middle school, and that the students are required to also sign both the handbook and the Code of Conduct too.
Yes, that's all part of final forms. It's all part of their Power School that they do for the beginning of their school year, is making sure that you understand your expectations. But then it's also in final forms, understanding that there's high school expectations, as well as our school expectations.
Thank you. This is really great. I know you've been working on this and put it together last year, so thank you for all this work, for sure.
Thank you so much. I just had a question regarding the surveys. When did we start surveying students and families?
We started that two years ago, and we do it each season. It will come out after the state finalists, so anybody that could possibly be going to state, all of the seasons are closed. And so we send it out to middle school, as well as high school, and it goes through final forms. Final forms has a student account, as well as an adult account that is linked up to that specific student. It is an anonymous survey, so we're just getting feel of, okay, what are some of the trends that we are seeing for our different teams?
Thank you so much. Very informative. It feels a little bit weird to be bringing this up, but to future cast a little bit, name, image, likeness, and how it is impacting our seniors who will be going out possibly to work in that world? What are we doing to educate both coaches and students on sort of their rights around name, image, likeness, and their privacy and that balance?
That is something that some of the school counselors have talked to our kids about, as well as some of the athletic directors. So it is not something that we have broached as much as we can, but you're right, it's definitely on the forecast of things to come.
It's just gonna be a short time till we have to talk about that.
Thank you so much. I know this is a ton of work. We've been talking about having some, this consistency here for a long time. And, you know, from what I can tell, what is in this handbook is, I'll just make up a percentage, 60% of it actually applies to other curricula, other extracurriculars, right?
Yes, yes.
So is there a vision in the future where there is a similar handbook for all the extracurriculars?
Well, this is available for absolutely anybody. I know I do focus on the coaching side of it, because we did make this with athletic directors, but you're right, it bleeds into almost every single one of our extracurriculars, because you're all part of a team. Whether that is you're part of the theater team, you're part of the band team, you're part of the marching band team, you're all part of a team. And so, and actually, our choirs and our bands are our largest teams that we have. So it could apply to all of those different pieces. The band directors do have likenesses within some of their guidebooks. The band directors do have likenesses within some of their guidebooks, but it's not all on the same page yet, but that is definitely something to for a future.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know a lot of work's gone into that. I won't booby-trap the next person. And next up, we have our superintendent's comments and Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our food service team for being here tonight and that presentation as well as Ms. Shawnee. We appreciate just the opportunity to kind of focus on all the work that goes on behind the scenes for the board. I'm excited to share that our team gets to host leaders from all three high schools this Wednesday. We have our first superintendent advisory of the year. This is one of my favorite things to do. We have kids that'll all come here from the three high schools. We do some icebreaker and interaction so they can make friends from the other schools, which we've actually had a lot of our three speakers from Convocation met through that and they've started doing some other things together as well. So excited to have them all here this week and then we will go out to their high schools multiple times throughout the year to talk more specifically at their buildings about what they're interested in. So that's always a great opportunity to hear from the kids about what they want from their schools. And so we have some activities planned to get some feedback from them about what do they value at our schools? What would they like to see improve? And you know, as we think about potentially difficult situations that may come our way attached to the ballot issue, I think it's really good to have information directly from the kids. So looking forward to hear from those leaders. Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity along with Nicole to attend the Board Member Candidate Forum at the local library and I just wanted to thank all of our board candidates for taking the time to participate in that activity and sharing their views and engaging with the community. I think it was really helpful. And then just wanted to take a moment to make sure that our community is aware, we've kind of mentioned this before, but it's quickly going to be upon us. Our plan is at the next board meeting on September 22nd to include a conversation with the board around potential reductions if the ballot issue fails. So our team's been putting together information for all of you that includes what is required by law. So if we had to look at reducing areas down to what's required and what would be the potential cost savings of eliminating programs and or positions that are not required by law? And just want to remind everyone that this is something we've been working on since after the last ballot failure last fall. We've already eliminated 4.8 million from our budgets, as you all know, another 3.3 million, including 33 positions and staffing. And we're continuing to look for opportunities everywhere we can to tighten up and see what we can do without, but we are at a point where we know we'll need to make significant reductions if this ballot issue is not successful. So we do plan on bringing that to all of you next board meeting. Want to encourage the community to stay involved in that process and engaged. And then once the board has an opportunity to discuss that and give us some direction, we will plan to communicate the possible reductions to the community as soon as we're able to do so. And that's all I have tonight, but I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have public comments. And the Board of Education welcomes public comment on educational issues of our interest to our school community. The board does not discriminate based on the identity or viewpoint of the speaker during our public participation. However, the board president may limit comments that are obscene, abusive or harassing. In an attempt to protect the privacy interests of our students, the board asks that speakers not identify students by name during their comments. Persons having public complaints about district personnel, programming or operations will be referred to the process set forth in Board Policy 9130. Finally, the board reminds speakers that their statement should be directed to the board as a whole and not to individual members. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screens and Ms. Dennis will call time when three minutes have elapsed. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Yana Doughty. Sorry, welcome.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Yana Doughty. I live here in Westerville and have two children at McVeigh Elementary and I have to give a special shout out to the amazing McVeigh staff and teachers for everything they've done for our family. I've only lived in Westerville for four years, but I chose to move here because it reminded me of the community I grew up in. I immigrated to the United States at the age of five. My family settled in a suburb of Cleveland in a large public school district much like Westerville. School quickly became my safe space. Through challenges and instability at home, it was my constant. It was where I built friendships that have lasted decades. It was where I took nearly a dozen AP classes that set me ahead in college. It was where mentors guided me through the admissions process as I became a first generation college student. It was where I discovered my love of leadership through extracurricular activities. I could say with absolute certainty, I am not the person, I would not be the person I am today without the nurturing and opportunities my public education gave me. These opportunities helped me earn both a bachelor's and a doctorate degree and serve today as a national pharmacy director. At McVeigh, my children are already experiencing the kind of opportunities that make a difference in young lives. They're surrounded by teachers who set the tone for curiosity and kindness every single day and there's a true sense of pioneer pride in the building. The lessons learned from Ms. Drum, Ms. Spectle, Mrs. Florence and Ms. Mantle are regular conversation pieces at our dinner table and tie into everyday life. Before school, the choir club led by the best music teacher, Mr. McIntyre, fills the halls with energy. There's a girls' running club where kids build confidence alongside endurance. The STEM club run by Ms. Smith is so packed with students that I've lost count, all of them eager to learn and exercise science and technology in a fun, hands-on way. These are the kind of experiences that shape kids far beyond the classroom. And when I look ahead to high school, I get excited about what's waiting for them. A wide range of AP classes, engineering labs spark innovation, athletic facilities that bring our community together and countless clubs and programs where they'll discover their passions. These are the very opportunities that launch kids into their future. That's why I'm here tonight, to urge everyone in this room and in our community to vote yes for Westerville schools. This ballot issue is not about politics, it's about making sure my kids, your kids and all the kids in the community have the same opportunities that I did. Without it, we face larger class sizes, fewer teachers, higher pay-to-play fees for sports, the loss of AP courses and the disappearance of clubs that build leadership and belonging. And these are not extras, they're life-changing opportunities. An investment in our schools is an investment in our community's future and the return is infinite. Please, let's protect and strengthen what makes Westerville a place families want to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Antonio Valentino. Welcome.
How y'all doing? Appreciate everybody's time. Just kind of want to start out by kind of letting everybody know that I'm a product of Westerville City Schools. My mother graduated from Westerville South. She graduated while she was pregnant with me and the stories that she usually tells me about, you know, the kind of support that she had from her teachers, being a, as taboo as being a teen mom in the late 90s were. So you know, I'm very thankful for those people. But I, I don't know if you guys can tell, I've been an athlete all my life, so I'm going to try to speak through an athletic lens even though I'm not speaking about athletics. I just think it's a great microcosm of our society as a whole. I played football for 20 years. I started as a little five-year-old boy who needed some energy to, you know, a positive way to get his energy out. That led me to, you know, playing at Blenheim, Westerville North, and then eventually at Penn State University where I graduated and at the University of Florida, excuse me. I then was able to, you know, pursue the NFL for a little while and you know, that kind of came to an end and now I'm back home. But I'm back home for a reason because I know that the resources that are here that are available, you know, kind of compared to what our, some of our students go through on a day-to-day basis is kind of, for lack of a better term, confusing to me. Like I said, I graduated from North. There are a lot of children who do not eat unless they are at school. But directly next to the school, there's a neighborhood full of houses that go for almost a million dollars. So I kind of just wanted to, I know I only got about a minute left, but I had a bunch of notes written down, but I just wanted to kind of, I guess, use my testimony and kind of be a little bit of a living and breathing example of what can happen when as a community we invest into our young people. You know, I don't have children. I would hope to one day. I would hope to also raise them in the Westerville City Schools District. I have two younger siblings. My younger brother goes to South. My sister goes to Wilder. And you know, I want to make sure that they have all the opportunities and everything that I had, you know, as we face trying times, uncertain times. I don't think that anybody has ever regretted investing into young people. I work in higher education now over at Dennison, so I do understand, I'm aware of, you know, the shifting tides, I guess we could say, to kind of keep things level. But there are many more kids who have the same potential that I had and can fulfill the same lives that I did. So I would love to, you know, encourage everybody to vote yes. Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Sarah Proz. Welcome.
I just wanted to thank the Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sarah Proz. I am here because my son Charlie, who is two and a half, will soon start school here in Westerville. I didn't attend Westerville Schools, but my husband is a 2003 graduate of Westerville North High School and I've fallen in love with Westerville since moving here about seven years ago. I wanted to speak, although I don't have a student in Westerville Schools yet, because of the incredibly special place Westerville Schools holds in this community. The connections my husband Tyler made in these schools continue to shape him. From the teachers and coaches to the secretary, Mr. Sale, who remains one of his favorite people to this day, Westerville Schools and the people who work in them made my husband the person he is today. And if you know him, Lord knows they had to put up with a lot of shenanigans for him to get there. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed .075 income tax on the ballot this November because I want to be a part of a community that continues building and strengthening its schools. Having looked at the opponents of this ballot issue's information, it just doesn't make sense. Both literally, they seem to combine a bunch of random numbers and always come back to the same conclusion, less for our schools, and figuratively, it doesn't make sense to not support our schools when they bring so much value to our community and our property values. Charlie loves to visit the school playgrounds and watch the big kids play on the athletic fields. We moved to Westerville because we wanted Charlie to have the same opportunities Tyler did growing up here. Our family plans to vote yes on the ballot measure in November to continue the legacy of outstanding education in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And last up, we have Mr. Eric Dennison. Welcome.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Again, my name is Eric Dennison and I know I don't look like it right now, but I am employed as a nuclear physicist with the state of Ohio. I don't know if you're aware or if you understand, but in the final analysis, every tax is collected by force or by threat of force. If you don't understand this, I ask you to think to the logical conclusion of what happens if you refuse to pay a tax. Eventually, someone will come with a gun to take you into custody, seize your assets, ruin your life. I know people say that the schools need more money and that may be the case. I don't know what churches you attend, I don't know what faiths you profess, I don't know what ethical systems you ascribe to. I am not aware of any church, faith or legitimate ethical system that says that it is a good thing to take by force assets from one person or group of people so that someone else can do what they want with them. You have said again, by putting another levy on the ballot, that you endorse the use of government influence and government force to take money from my pocket so that you can do what you want with it. You don't care, or you don't seem to care, what local businesses I might want to support with that money, what charities I might want to support with that money. You don't seem concerned with the fact that some of my neighbors will have a harder time paying their mortgages and their rent because of this levy, that some of my friends across town will have a harder time putting food on the table and putting clothes on their children's backs because of this levy. For all of you who support the levy, I ask you to consider this. The schools may need more money. You're welcome to that opinion. It may be factual. If you believe the schools need more money, then put up your own money. You are welcome to give as much of your own money to the schools as you want. Instead of taking your kids to Disney for the summer, write a check to the schools. Instead of taking a cruise for the summer, write a check to the schools. Instead of going to a show or to a Buckeye game or to a Blue Jackets game, write a check to the schools. But it is simply not ethical, moral or philosophically justifiable to force someone else to give money so that you can do what you want with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment period. Next up, we have board meeting minutes and may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, August 25th, 2025?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or? Okay, we take the vote, please, Ms. Marshall.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And moving along to financials, .71, may I have a motion to approve the resolution requiring the continuation of a five-year financial forecast?
So moved. Second.
And Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you. So as part of the most recent state budget bill, the five-year financial forecast was changed to be what I like to call a four-year financial forecast, except for they used some creative language around that. Specifically, the new language requires the current year budget plus three additional years. So our current forecast has the current year budget plus four additional years. There was a lot of conversation around this, you know, as we're looking at trying to responsibly plan for the future and it was as we're signing long-term contracts, sometimes up to as much as five years, that financial forecast is what we use to determine if we're able to sign some of these contracts. And so talking with my colleagues around the state, our associations, I feel and my, most of the people, experts in this space feel that it's prudent to continue to have that long-term planning tool. We will, of course, still file with the state of Ohio, the requirement of the current year budget plus three years, three additional years. But for our district, for us to be able to continue to plan, I would like for the board to continue to receive a five-year financial forecast from me. So basically, I would just drop off the last year of that forecast that gets submitted to the state. I just want to make sure that we're transparent with our community about what's coming up and what we're looking towards.
There are no penalties for us internally, if you will, preparing a five-year, right?
Oh, no, I can provide all the financial reports so far. I mean, unless, you know, they come out and say they have to pass new law for that, so...
But our current law, there's no restrictions on doing a five-year.
The only thing that's required is the current year budget plus three additional years. There is nothing that says you can't add additional years to that. I mean, in some cases, we even look out 10 years depending on what the situation is, but I don't think people know that. But anyway, so I would recommend the board approve this resolution. It just shows that I have your support behind this and it's really just a matter of what I'm presenting at school board meetings so that you guys can see that.
I mean, in short, we're requiring a, I'm going to say higher standard in terms of maintaining the, but a different standard that exceeds what the state is requiring. And in order for the treasurer CFO to stop doing that, we would have to rescind this. Okay, just want to be clear to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Any other? Okay, can we take the vote?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And can we take personal consent as one? All right. May I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda eight point zero one through eight point ten?
Still moved.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, and good evening. I'd like to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. Along with the regular action items in tonight's agenda, there are a number of items to be noted. For resignations, we have nine classified resignations, and as typical, we have a few who've resigned as substitutes to take a contracted position within our district. We have a single teacher resignation from a candidate who resigned before actually starting her role as a licensed teacher. And we have one administrator resignation from Rachel Pinto, who coordinated the nurses within our district. We have a single licensed leave of absence from an employee completing leave for childcare. And as we've seen in the past few meetings, we have minor contract status changes for those classified employees who make slight adjustments to their day. We have one-time pays for gifted training coming up this semester, and payment for a couple of staff members who were board-approved and hired after a one-time pay event had already been approved. So we want to make sure that we don't leave those folks out and they get their correct payment. We recommend the hire of seven new classified employees and a collection of classified substitutes. We also have a prorated amendment to the contract of a licensed employee who was unable to begin work on the first contract day of the teacher year. And we are excited to have all of them join the Westerville family. We are also rounding out the few remaining supplemental coaching and advisor positions, as well as the many hourly workers who support our extracurricular events. And the Board has two retirements to approve this evening. Deb Asta will be retiring after thirty-one years in the district. Deb started out as a crossing guard and has become a valuable, valuable member to our human resources team. Kim Ayatana will be retiring as a second-grade teacher from Robert Frost. And Kim has served Westerville City Schools for thirty-three years. Kim and Deb have collectively served Westerville City Schools for sixty-four years. And this marks the second board meeting in a row where the collective service of our retirees dates back to the year nineteen sixty-one. So what else happened in nineteen sixty-one? Now, who can forget the comic book debut of The Fantastic Four? Nobody was happier than Barbie at the release of the Ken doll. America listened to the music of the modern-day Romeo and Juliet as West Side Story stormed into the theaters that October. And a multicultural and multiracial group of freedom riders hit the road for equality, and Westerville kicked the title of a village and became a city. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions, just congratulations to the retirees and thank you. Okay, we take the vote?
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. We don't have any old business, moving along to new business. I see you moved far. Ten point zero one, our first reading of Policy fifty-two twenty-three, release time for religious instruction during the school day. Mr. Reeves, talk to us about this.
Yes, this is a revision to Policy fifty-two twenty-three, release time for religious instruction during the school day. The Board will recall that House Bill Eight, which took effect this spring on April nine, made it a requirement for public school districts to allow students to have release time for religious instruction during the school day. And we changed our policy to be compliant with that legislation this spring. This summer's budget bill made a few additions compelling this policy revision, where participating students' absences will be excused during release time. And we identified that the release can occur up to one class period per week, excluding core curriculum. And we had to define core curriculum, which is considered to be all-graded curriculum with state-approved standards. And our policy must allow for students to return to school with program materials from their release time instruction. Now, also referenced in this policy is Policy ninety-seven hundred, which governs the distribution of those materials on the return of students, which includes this clause. "No outside organization or staff member or student representing an outside organization may distribute or post literature on that organization's behalf on district property either during or after school hours without the permission and prior review of the superintendent." Which simply means, students are welcome to bring materials back, but we ask that they keep them secure and refrain from distributing them to other students who do not partake in the religious time instruction. Cheryl Relford and I have met several times with the leadership of LifeWise over the past several months to develop our process for this school year, and we are confident that we have a mutual understanding of our policies and processes.
Any questions?
I just had one question regarding the definition of sponsoring entity. I know we're in particular focused on LifeWise, but does the state outline what qualifies a sponsoring religious entity? Or do we internally define what a sponsoring entity is?
They do define it. I can get to you that language, and it's kind of like a bona fide religious institution. But I can provide for you what the qualifications are. But it is, there are qualifications and parameters for what qualifies as a religious institution for release time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other? Okay.
Thank you. Moving along to the first reading of Policy sixty-eight thirty, our audit, and Ms. Marshall.
Yes, thank you. So this is sort of an update based on a newer law that was put in place a couple of years ago. Just as a review of the policy, we realized that this hadn't been updated, so we're adding it now. There was a new requirement that should treasurer separate from employment. They would work with the Board to make sure that all monies are accounted for, and then there's a certificate, an official certificate that's involved. So we're updating the policy to include that language. It just mirrors what's required under Ohio law. I'm assuming there was probably a treasurer somewhere that ran off into the sunset with a school district's money or something, and so they felt like they had to add this. I'm not aware of it being a requirement for any other public entity, but it's a new thing for this.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. All right, thanks so much. There's no recommended action in our standing business, and so moving along to board comments, who would like to go first?
Well, I just want to congratulate and thank our retirees, as always. It's just incredible seeing folks choose to work in this district, so thank you so much for that. I also want to thank our guest speakers who took time to share their stories and how this district really shaped them into the people that they are. That was really incredible hearing those testimonies, so thank you for that. And then I just want to thank our treasurer and superintendent for participating in that education forum hosted by the chamber. Thank you so much.
I will echo my colleagues' statements, but also say thank you in particular to the food services. If you haven't watched, like, a changeover, and like, it is a military operation, like, to the minute regarding like what happens between lunch and, or between breakfast and lunch, and how this all just comes together. It's really amazing. And also, thank you for the hard work of our coaches and that team, putting together some really solid policies that I think we can all build on.
I just have something very brief. So we've gotten into the thick of it here. I feel like we're really getting into the school year, and I'm particularly excited about the handbook for coaches as we're here deep in, into fall sports. And I just really encourage families to pay attention to that. You know, understand, you know, we have some really amazing coaches. It's really important that not just the students and the coaches, but also the families understand what's in that handbook and just make sure that you're aware of all the policies and procedures. I think sometimes we roll things out like this, it's very easy as busy families to, you know, miss stuff. I know kids in school, I get very busy and miss things. But this is, it's really important, having that consistency, having that resource is really important. So please, if your children participate in athletics or other extracurricular activities, so much of this is relevant, please take some time when that is distributed. So, do we know, is that, and here, because I don't have a child who's an athlete? Has it already been distributed? Is it on its way out? What's the?
So the athletes' handbooks are already on the website, and then the other piece you was talking about is more for staff. But the family, the handbook for families should be on our website.
Yeah, great, so please go read it, thanks.
And I will say, we've already had to sign it too, yeah, as parents and students. So just want to echo my colleagues, thank you all for coming out tonight. There's plenty of opportunities to learn more about the Earn Income ballot measure. And so I really encourage you to learn more and to dig in. And I also wanted to say, there's a lot of information coming out. It's, you know, we're settling into the new, the new year, but there's curriculum nights, there's parent-teacher conferences. So just take a look at your emails and be mindful of that. But thank you to our, you know, our food staff for coming out, and Ms. Yanni for all their work too. And with that, I'll just say thanks. The Board will meet in special session on Friday, September nineteenth, at twenty-twenty-five, at eight-thirty a.m. In regular session on Monday, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, at six p.m. at the Early Learning Center, which is here. And that address is nine-three-six Eastwood Drive, Westerville, Ohio four-three-zero-eight-one, for those online. And next, may I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment, compensation, and discipline of public employees?
Still moved.
Second.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you, you're welcome to say that I'm not sure when we'll be back.